I'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll have a clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain, here.
Treasurer Horning, here.
Here.
Trustee Chauvieux, here.
Here.
Trustee Germain, absent.
Trustee Harper, here.
Trustee Petrucci, here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Kalani, second by treasurer Horning. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Number five is called to the public. Anybody called to the public this evening?
We have a proclamation.
Being none. We have a special proclamation this evening honoring Richard and Barbara Krueger from the community council for all their efforts. And with that, I'm going to have Larry Shoufu read the actual proclamation, then we'll take a quick recess and take a picture with them honoring their special evening.
It gives me great pleasure to be the one to read this proclamation, as I've worked with both Barb and Dick for a very long time. Whereas our community is one known for generosity and engagement with one another, and whereas volunteers within the Heartland Township make community events possible and have become a vital and positive force within Heartland Township, that charity and social responsibility manifest all that is good in an individual, and that the well-being of community is largely dependent on helping. And whereas Richard and Barbara Krueger have shown great leadership in their roles with the Heartland Area Community Council, particularly in the execution of events, including the Memorial Day Parade and the Heritage Day, now therefore, we, the Heartland Township Board of Trustees, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim the selfless dedication of Richard and Barbara Krueger.
you won't be gone.
That's our intent.
We just put a new roof up.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Item number six is approval of our consent agenda. We'd like to head over here real quick and we'll take a quick picture. Thank you.
So moved.
For.
Motion by treasurer Horning, second by trustee Petrucci. Any discussion?
Yeah, me too.
Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Congratulations, you guys.
Item number seven is applicant special, let me see, number 534, site plan with special land use, turning to softball training complex. Good evening. If you'd like to set up here at the main table, James, the gentleman has his laptop.
James, you should be in here.
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay.
So he might be able to just, if you need any pictures or diagrams on behalf of the board.
I can put the ring rings up if you want.
Yeah, I could pull them up. Do you have a VGA port there?
Yeah, I've got them on here.
Oh, I see. Okay, we'll pull you up.
Okay.
I got five.
Well, welcome to the meeting tonight. Joe Petrucci is our, Joe Kalani is our liaison. The other Italian is.
He usually sits over there.
He's our planning commission liaison. So I asked Joe to brief the board and kind of where the project is, and then we'll go from there.
Well, this is a site plan, special use land use permit, number 534, is before us because it is a special land use because of the use that's being planned for, in particular, this involves an indoor training facility and four softball fields. Actually, were we before this, I can't remember, in so many different meetings, was this number before?
This has not been here.
Okay. This originally came before the planning commission in a public hearing. The applicant heard a number of comments from the public, as well as from the planning commission and our planner. They came back before the planning commission, I think a couple of weeks ago. At that time, one of the main concerns was originally this was going to be a site that was illuminated, softball fields were going to be illuminated. There was also some discussion regarding the location next to the border of the other land uses to the west. The applicant then subsequently came back to the planning commission. The illumination of the fields has been, was eliminated. The entire site was moved 80 feet to the east and came before the planning commission. Many of the comments that were discussed at the last board meeting had to deal with more or less with landscaping and traffic. They're before us today for approval of the special land use for site plan 534. This is a, at the risk of commenting, I think it's one of the nicest sites. It's perfect for this location in terms of the land use. This is, although it's currently Zone CA, there is a small portion that's zone general commercial, but the entire area there is actually master planned and slight industrial. This is, I think, a use that is consistent with the vision of the township, and I'm certainly going to recommend that we approve the special land use. I don't know if the applicant has some other things that they'd like to present to the board, maybe go through.
If you'd like to just briefly go through the highlights you'd like, and then I'll open up any questions that the board may have.
I just know of questions from the public that you might address because your, our television cable system is, people ask me, how could you so easily remove the lighting? And I explained it to a few residents, but maybe you would like to explain why you don't need the lighting?
Sure. Again, the most complexes, it's just a nice feature to have in case, you know, it's late in the fall or in the spring. But majority is, are played before school goes back. So mostly, again, if you're a high school student, you don't play a lot of games in September and October. So as you'd see on a night tonight, it might affect the last hour. But again, the cost to put them in, again, disrupting the neighbors is not, you know, again, it would be a nicety, but not a necessity. So with all the things that, again, trying to show to be a good neighbor, is one of the, probably the most sticking points. It was, again, it was a nicety, but not a necessity. So we thought it was a good community decision to remove them.
Okay. Great.
So maybe I could take you through. I'm Kevin Johnson again. And so, again, the goal was to put the training facility there, again, because Michigan, one of the reasons the facility's needed is, there's just not a lot of all the southern sports they can train. The last tournament, I think, was in Kentucky or South Carolina, and those teams play year-round. And so, all the Michigan teams, especially high school girls and things like that, don't have any places to train indoors. And so, the goal would be to build a training facility and then have some outdoors. So in the summertime, they play outdoors. In the indoors, you'd just be able to train. There wouldn't be full fields. It'd be like little mini fields that you'd be able to play, take infield on, little small outfield. There's John just kind of showing. You'd have some batting cages. So again, the goal would be that, you know, the community could use it, you know, year-round, both inside and out. When it's bad, use it inside, and when it's nice, you play outside. It's a nice fit for the community. Again, just having some recreation outdoors. The goal is to have some artificial turf. So one of the other really nice things about the development is, be using the same turf, like we've talked about in the past, like at University of Michigan and things like that, where they have the artificial turf. I know they were just recently in a tournament, and the tournament was canceled on Sunday because it was on clay, and it was all slimy. So they traveled all the way down there. And so, the goal would be that these would be really nice, you know, nice fields, nicer landscape, nice development, a master plan for the community. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the, comments from the board?
Do you have any coordination with, already affiliation with the Michigan High School Athletic Association?
I don't, can't speak specifically for the owners group, but there is, turn two currently has a facility, and they're, it's very small. And so, again, their goal is to make a nicer facility and to update. But again, there will be a lot of high school students playing, because I know their daughter goes, one of the owner's daughters goes to school here locally. So I'm sure a lot of those high school kids will be playing. But I don't know the official affiliation, can't.
Where's the next closest facility that's like this?
The next one that I know of is in Grand Rapids, is the newest facility that would be nice like that. There's one called, I think it's called Elite Sports. I think it's in Grand Rapids. So there aren't many.
So will you be having tournaments there?
So, yeah, the goal would be on the outside. In the summertime, you'd have some girls' softball tournaments, I guess. That would be the goal.
Just girls?
At the moment, yeah. Again, the plan, we originally showed a baseball field. Again, you know, again, we showed one. It was kind of like, hey, how many people are coming, and what about tags? And again, it was just like, okay, we're just trying to get started, build the indoor, have some stuff outdoors. Obviously, long-term, it'd be nice if that same field was multipurpose, you know, the fence could move, but.
Do the softball fields differ from boys' and girls?
They do. They do a little bit. So the girls' fields are usually all dirt, I guess it'd be brown turf. But yeah, the baseball fields and softball fields are different.
Baseball fields, hardball is, yeah.
And the boys' fences are farther. So the field dimensions are different and things like that. So the bases, so it is a little different. So right now, it's currently just planned for, but there's been a lot of excitement. So, you know, hopefully, the future would be different. But again, there's been a really good positive press. Everybody's been happy. Again, I think it's been, we've been here two or three times. We even came and met with the planner before we ever wanted to draw the first pencil. We wanted to make sure the community wanted it. Wanted to make sure we're doing it the right way. So we came and asked, you know, advice before. We've drawn the plans. We've tried to, again, follow what you'd like to see here, and if we could match our dreams with your plans thus far today. So the goal would be, it'd be a great community outreach in general. So whatever that means for the future, hopefully.
What's the timeframe on it?
The original goal, again, is taking a little longer than, the goal was, you know, originally, if you could have the fields done for the spring, those girls have spring softball. You know, I'll have a lot of work to do. But the goal would be to start here next month, to, you know, move the dirt and start to work through the winter, try to put up the training facility in the middle of winter, you know, come out of the spring. And there's a lot of brick on it, so I don't think I can do it in the middle of winter. But next fall would be the name, would be the opening at this point. I don't think I can get the fields in by spring, but I think that would be his choice. But I'm good, but that would be really good.
Good weather.
Yeah, that would be some good weather. Like the years we've had, a few, like three or four years ago, the winters were nice. We were playing golf, I think, in March, right?
We were.
Yeah.
El Nino.
Right. So we need a little bit of that. So if we have that, we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, they're predicting a mild winter, is what I read the other day. Can you put up the site plan so that most can see the actual, the main, I think, just from, maybe the landscape?
Yeah.
Kind of, yeah, I think if you can kind of show, blow that up a little bit. One of the things that I mentioned is, the applicant moved the facility about 80 feet to the east. By doing that, they are maintaining much of the existing vegetation that is located to provide that screen and buffer of the facility from adjacent property owners. There is some, obviously, when the leaves come down, there may, there'll be some screening, but not a whole lot. I think the applicant agreed to put in a few coniferous trees, right?
We did put in some more trees. They're just in further spots that we thought were maybe missing some.
Some areas. So, and then there were some minor changes to the landscape within the parking lot.
But the goal, they have a nice bowl of artifacts. So again, we were trying to create a nice park feel when you come in. We have a little sign, we have a couple of flag bowls, nicely landscaped bowl of our, John, you want to go back? Oh, and then you can see coming out of the facility, it'd kind of be a bowl of artifacts to the field between the buildings. So we're trying to make a nice aesthetically park landscaping feel to the two. And again, trying to keep as many trees and vegetation as possible for all reasons. We have to do a little bit of, the property, if you know, is really sloped from Clyde Road, you know, down to the creek. So we'll have to do enough just to flatten the field so they're not ski slope. But besides that, we want to do the same thing. We don't want to take anything down for the neighbors that we don't have to either. Again, if we could keep it all the way it is, that'd be great.
I think some of the folks that came in expressed some concern, one about when they, for example, the, you know, what kind of fertilizer for the fields. Well, when it was explained that it'll be artificial, obviously, that, you know, they were concerned more about the environment. And that, that sort of took care of that issue. And then there was an issue with traffic, which I believe that the studies have shown that this should be, you know, it's adequate for this area. However, folks who live in that area have expressed concerns regarding the overall traffic. But I think we have traffic problems throughout the entire township. It's not just this location.
We've had the county look at it, review it, and the traffic study from road engineering and all the things. So it's all been, been clear. So we've given them all the peak hours and all of our forecasts and what.
We may need to have, from a township perspective, there's an area that, when you come down that from the south, you, there's, there's no vision of the traffic that you might run into. You know, if you're coming north from the south and coming up, there's a blind spot there. And I think my suggestion would be that perhaps we could get, for lack of telling, well, I know that if you went on Ormond Road, coming south on Ormond Road, there's a blind spot as you reach F-59. And make it very clear that, you know, you've got to pace your speed in case there's a backup of cars who want to get on F-59. I see that potentially being a problem here. And we may want to have some sort of warning before you reach, you know, to that blind spot, that you need to slow down because traffic could back up.
We actually met the road, we actually staked it, and we actually met the road commission out there to make sure that the entrance was in the spot that they thought was the best in both directions.
So that, that backup, if there was a backup.
Yeah. They didn't want it too close to Clyde Road. They wanted to make sure there's enough space there, but they didn't want it too far down this way. So that's where they wanted it. And so we met them out there, had road engineering meet them out there. And so, that's how the final.
Little location.
Yeah, that's right. So we're using their recommendation. And then we, you know, again, we left some future parking. Again, we've got plenty of land. There's 90 acres there, 89 acres. So we just wanted to show in good faith, you know, what about the one day when you have, you know, all the grandparents come or something. There's some extra parking there available, that the township would see that there's plenty of space that we've master planned it for some future growth. Hopefully, there'd be some future growth in plan of most businesses.
Well, I think it's a great, for our community, from a couple of standpoints. One is, we're friendly by nature is our brand that we're pushing.
Yeah.
And I think Heartland's probably known best for its school district and its families.
Yeah.
And I just think this is, especially at a gateway coming into this community, how many communities have a, you know, it just, to me, it just says family oriented and the outdoors type, type feel. I think that's, that we're working on for our brand. And I'm excited to have you be part of our community. Anybody else have any comments? If there aren't any, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve special land use permit for site plan number 534, turn into softball training complex, subject to the conditions established by the planning commission in their motion of August 27, 2015.
Support. Motion by trustee Kalani, second by trustee Harper. Any final discussion or comments? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Welcome. Where do you think the people would be driving from? Just out of curiosity for the training.
Some of the girls' teams are right here locally in Heartland and Brighton and Howell. A lot of, you know, there's a lot of 96, there's a lot of girls' softball teams. But again, most of the, most of the good tournaments for girls' softball aren't in Michigan.
East Coast?
Yeah. So, you know.
So you'll be, you'll be driving.
Hopefully.
Hopefully some tourism.
You know, like Grand Rapids. Yeah, all the, the goal would be that this would be a nicer place because you could play, you know, the turf is, I might as well, according. The goal would be there would be a first-class facility, and the turf next to the park, the teams would all play here first.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a friend whose daughter plays, and the only place they could have tournaments was in Grand Rapids, like you said. I didn't know that was the only other facility.
So that's kind of the goal, is that the indoor facility would be first-class, and the teams would use it playing. And I think because you have the soccer, it's a really big one on 96, and the teams would use it playing indoors in the facilities, and the indoor is good for the outdoor. But part of the outdoor itself, they want, again, they play, they just kind of travel all the way down, and they got from Saturday to the parade, so they use it all the time. It's for Sunday, and all the playoffs too, so. Because we drove there, we rode out there, and all the families and teams, the whole family town. And one thing is that they had their official turf.
Yeah.
So he's got a passion for the community, or a couple of hours that we can, let's have a couple of them to, they don't have the rest of their community.
Well, if you need good sod, there's a sod farm right down the street from where you're building.
And they're both, I guess, they own the owners, and they don't really tell us, they all make sure it's a good old land use for the long term.
Very good. Well, welcome.
Yep.
Okay, our next item is 8A. It's Woodcliff Wellhouse abandonment. And I would probably guess this would be Mr. West.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you recall, the Woodcliff Wellhouse, we abandoned the wells last year, and now we're in the basic, final phase of the, taking that whole facility offline, which is basically the demolition of it. We invited nine vendors to bid on that project and received two responses. And I've made the recommendation on there to execute a contract with pre-services for the complete demolition of that and restoration of the existing grounds.
I'm just getting to the, going through the other site plan to get to it. Am I good?
Oh, no problem, no problem.
I'm scrolling.
Page 95.
Just to kind of give you a heads up, you may ask, well, if you sent it out to nine contractors, why did you only get two back? Unfortunately, this is a very busy time for contractors. All the work they committed to in the summer, they're now coming to their crunch time. We kind of expected a very low turnout, and in fact, I've actually contacted a few of them, and they said, we just don't have time. It's simple as that. This is a, multiple different facets associated with this project. There, it's kind of the jack-of-all-trades project, if you will. There's water main issues that have to be dealt with. We're going to have some permitting through DEQ with the hazardous materials on site. So this is not just a, kind of like a, an abandoned home that's being knocked down. This is much more involved. The current driveway has to be removed, and we're going to have to pour a small section of sidewalk and curbing to match the existing sidewalk and curbing within Woodcliff. That's per our master agreement with Woodcliff when that was taken over by the township.
I moved off the rise of supervisor and clerk to execute a contract with Priest to demolish the Woodcliff Well House for $39,900.
I'll support it.
A motion by treasurer Horning, second by trustee Petrucci. Any discussion or comments?
I got a question.
Sure.
Does this have to be done this year?
It does not necessarily have to be done this year. And quite frankly, I believe that's under the estimate that we were given prior when we were shopping around in the beginning of summer.
Okay.
So I don't think there's any cost advantage to waiting.
All right, that one answers the question.
The downside of that is, if that building stands, it's on DEQ's radar. It's a liability because we have to pay Woodcliff a portion for snow plowing that. It's, I would rather have it off our books sooner than later, so we don't go through another six months' worth of payment on it, I guess you could say, and just having it even on DEQ's radar. So it will certainly be due to the township, just to wash our hands of it as soon as we can.
All right.
Yep.
And they'll reseed there? They take the asphalt out in the building? That'll just, that'll be?
Yes. Everything will be land-balanced. You know, we're going to work in-depth with the Woodcliff community. We've already spoken with the association, asked them kind of what, you know, and everybody's, they're not shooting for the moon. They're just like, make it look like the building was never there. So that's what we plan to do.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And then item 8B is the Heritage Park parking lot expansion. Bob, you have the floor again?
You know, reach out to James, see if you can post setup on the wall. I apologize. My computer was having a little trouble logging on.
Yeah, which one do you want?
Just with the options on it as well.
Okay.
As you know, we, how this project kind of started was through the park advisory committee, as well as, you know, board desires. We've all known that the park has needed additional parking. Anytime there's a tournament out there, they're all over the lawn and whatnot. So we went out to, HRC was contracted to do the design work, and also has a contract that's tentative for the construction oversight. They designed it, put the project out to bid. The results came back in the bid tab that's in front of you. The lowest bidder was Eagle Golf, who obviously you're all familiar with, who did Settlers Park and actually did the original Heritage Park. So actually, I was reviewing quite a bit of it, and it appears that the majority of the unit costs are very similar to what they were when we did Settlers Park. So prices have not increased any great amount or anything of that nature. The base price, which would be extending the parking lot to mimic the existing conditions of the parking lot that's there, is $101,000. And then, per the desires of the board to kind of explore the options of upgrading the material on site, that's what you have before you. We have two options, which is 21AA crushed concrete or 21AA limestone. My personal recommendation would be if we're going to spring for the crushed concrete, it may put us in a better position to actually go to the limestone. If we go with the crushed concrete, I certainly would want to inspect it prior and see where it was sourced from. A lot of times, you get metal in the crushed concrete, which isn't always advantageous when you are mixing that with tires. So, but this is what we have before us, and we've priced it out for just the expansion only, or if we wanted to go the whole parking lot and the asphalt handicap parking, if we decided to move forward with that as well, what it would cost for the eight spots. That would be two in each corner of the four corners of the parking lot.
Bob, you said the expansion's going to be a little bit of an upgrade, right?
Well, what we're going to try and do now is actually keep it relatively at the same less than 12 inches difference from one end to the other. We have the northeast corner of the park, which actually dips down. We can kind of, I don't want to say, transfer it over there. And also, what we'll do is stage where the future structure will go, and we might build that up maybe another 16, 18 inches and balance that for future development.
So one of the questions is, if you recall, we ended up doing a lot of the gravel with onsite material. We were able to find something that was comparable. As it turns out, it wasn't necessarily as good of a quality as what's here. And so, it's dusty, it doesn't hold compaction all that well. And so, that was one of the thoughts behind that, these quotes about doing the entire parking area would be to take what's there, spread it thin, and then put a new coat of better material on top of the whole parking lot, rather than just the expansion to improve the entire parking lot. So that's, that's the difference there.
I have a question. Why would it only cost, well, not only cost, but it costs $62,000 to do the limestone of the expansion only, and 88 is only another $16,000? Isn't that original parking lot a lot bigger than the
That would be two in each corner of the four corners of the parking lot.
Bob, you said the expansion's going to be a little bit of an upgrade, right?
Well, what we're going to try and do now is actually keep it relatively at the same less than 12 inches difference from one end to the other. We have the northeast corner of the park, which actually dips down, we can kind of, I don't want to say transfer it over there. And also what we'll do is stage where the future structure will go, and we might build that up maybe another 16, 18 inches and balance that for future development.
So one of the questions is, if you recall, we ended up doing a lot of the gravel with onsite material. We were able to find something that was comparable. As it turns out, it wasn't necessarily as good of a quality as what's here. And so it's dusty, it doesn't hold compaction all that well. And so that was one of the thoughts behind that, these quotes about doing the entire parking area would be to take what's there, spread it thin, and then put a new coat of better material on top of the whole parking lot, rather than just the expansion to improve the entire parking lot. So that's, that's the difference there.
I have a question. Why would it only cost, well, not only cost, but it costs $62,000 to do the limestone of the expansion only, and 88 is only another $16,000? Isn't that original parking lot a lot bigger than the expansion?
It is, and what I've been told on that was there's quantity discounts available, and they can put it in the bigger trucks to get it out there. Certainly that'll require some additional investigation. And one thing I wanted to suggest is perhaps there's a more appropriate hybrid approach to this. I've been thinking a lot about this. My recommendation moving forward would be, I just think there's a lot of traffic out there. I'm not confident that we're going to spend $100,000 in additional stone, and it's still going to get rutted up. I think there's just, you know, to compare it to Settlers Park, it's not apples to apples. We don't nearly have the traffic volumes out here. What my recommendation would be is to scope out the driveway itself, maybe limestone that. We don't have, for all intensive purposes, higher speeds in the actual parking lot, not that you have higher speeds on the drive part, but that's where the majority of the dust is actually created. As you're looking for a parking spot, you're not really, you're at such a slow pace, you're not creating as much dust. And on the sidebar, we can always come back and add the stone if it doesn't work. It's not going to be any cheaper to truck it in at that time. There might be just the equipment mobility fee. So my recommendation, you know, as I think, and have been thinking about this over the past week, is perhaps just to do the driveway going in.
And leave the existing parking lot with the material?
Yeah, I would match the existing. I think that's a very efficient way to do it, and we could see how that lasts. If it does prove to be advantageous, that that limestone has just shown much better quality, then maybe we explore it. I would just, I think that's a big investment at this time when there's just overwhelming traffic volumes out there. I would hate to put all that stone down, and we're still grading it, we're still having to run chloride through there because of the dust complaints.
And to answer your question as well, is on the existing portion, you don't need as thick of a layer of a stone, you're just putting down a small, short.
Well, yeah, I apologize, that, the material that's there now is a good base. So we'd be looking at maybe three to four inches, where we're probably going to be six to seven on the new part, because there was a lot of work to separate, if you will, and use that, get that base there. They would propose to use whatever material, it's cheaper just to truck that in and use it as a base, so.
So that's what they're going to do? They're going to bring, they're going to haul in the new base material?
It will be, if you upgrade, that includes that as base material as well.
So are they using existing material from the site to do this new parking lot?
It will be, it won't be used base, it'll be just a foundation, there's going to do a thicker layer, because there was a lot of time and effort put into separating that, getting some of the fines out of there, and it's cheaper just to truck in the limestone now at that point. So, and we don't know how much is there. I mean, we really didn't get into the depths on that expansion part, is what I'm told. So we don't know how much is there quantity-wise. We may get down there and find there's plenty, we don't know. This is kind of a worst-case scenario.
I'm trying to understand what, the scope for the 100 grand is to do what exactly?
Three to four inches on the existing, six to seven on the future.
With 22AA?
With whatever material, yeah, 21AA. If we don't go with the options, it would be your 22.
Right. The base prices with 22AA, and if we are able to use a lot of what's there as base, that would reduce the unit price.
And that's what's there on the existing?
Yes.
Right.
It's equivalent to 22.
Yeah. Well, I like your idea of taking what, whatever we can get there, and have that parking lot both be the same, and limestone the driveway in. Whenever I've been there, or whenever I'm driving by, it's, it's the speed and everything, because when you're in a parking lot, you're not going fast anywhere.
Exactly, and, you know, that, you know, just thinking about it over the past week, I would, that's a lot of money to spend without, I would hate to come back and say, hey, I need more money for grading and more money for chloride, because $100,000 of limestone still create in a lot of dust. Limestone does break down, it's a great material, but we certainly have high traffic volumes for a parking lot out there.
Well, again, that's what I would like to see is, how much do you think it's going to cost to limestone that driveway?
What I would be looking for is probably a $35,000 contingency. And I'll break it down by unit cost and do the measurements, and so what I would be looking for is authorization for the township manager and myself to spend up to $35,000 on the limestone for the driveway. I would like to think it'll come in less than that, but just, you know, if he, if it's required to put down a thicker coat there or something, I know every time we have it graded there, everybody who grades that parking lot says, there is no material to even grind up here, you're into the base material. So going with that, I don't know if we're going to need four inches or if we're going to need six. I would like to think conservatively, we could get away with four on the actual driveway, going up past the first curve. So I would be looking for $35,000 contingency above and beyond the 101.
Well, in the road commission, we did Kraus Road years ago, they made the sub-base, the right drainage, and then they even put, I think they put on six inches of limestone, then they chlorided it and rolled it, and they did a second lift on it.
Yes.
Now, that's a road, but it really packs, if you put it all on once, it kind of.
Right, and that's the key, is to get it, to get the chloride in there. I got to be honest, we do have some chloride money left over. Going with the off-peak, you know, we could certainly do an internal budget amendment to transfer some of that money over to have the chloride applied in between the two coats. That's not an issue whatsoever.
Bob, do you think we could save money? We just held off on the handicap parking until we asphalted or did the other sidewalk work that we were going to do, we're going to do some asphalting.
I'll be honest with you, my recommendation as far as the handicap parking is, none of our other parks have that, we're not ADA compliant as it sits. My recommendation would just to be put the signs up, so I.
Make the corners.
I'd like to wait till we do an actual building and have it close to.
Yeah, absolutely. So in the meantime, I mean, we do have some handicap signs ordered, just to keep on hand, because we've had a few complaints. We were planning on putting two in at each corner, but I would recommend for going to asphalt at this time, because we don't know the full concept, and once we get a building in, then maybe discuss it at that time.
Okay.
So that, with that price, the 101, does that include the asphalt or?
No, that was an additional option. All these are additional. So basically, I'd be looking for a contract, 101 for base, $35,000 in contingency funds for the limestone of the driveway. And I think it, I think we may be able to come in less than that if we can get it down to four inches.
In that approach, just to clarify, that would be the existing parking lot will stay as is, and the new parking lot would be 22AA?
Similar material.
Not any of the similar material.
Right.
Comments or questions?
Bob, is it concerning that the prices are so far off on some of these? I mean, I know, I know four of these companies, and I know, the four I know are really reputable companies. And I'm just kind of concerned that the price is so different, so it's.
I'll be honest with you, historically bidding out projects, the people that came in a little higher tend to historically on all our projects, come in just a pinch higher.
Also based on how much work they have available.
Absolutely.
Time to have, if they don't, you know, they're going to price it higher, and if they get it fine, but if they don't.
Well, there is one key advantage, Eagle Golf knows what's underground there.
Right.
And.
And they did a good job last time, no doubt about that. My, the other question I have is, when they, when you actually contract with them, do they do draws as they're, as they're doing the project?
Yes, they do.
So when, when they do a draw, do you go out there to see if the work was done and done correctly?
Absolutely. When we did Settlers Park, there were.
You measure the depth of the, of the crush, whatever we're going to have?
Well, in this particular case, HRC has a proposal on the table to oversee that.
Project management.
Yeah, so I wouldn't be doing that.
Somebody, somebody got to check that, to see that.
Absolutely.
If we're supposed to get six inches, we have six inches.
Absolutely.
Right.
And with Settlers Park, yes, I was going out in the field with tape measures and counting each parking block and measuring the retention basin to make sure it was accurate.
We're getting what this.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
You'll recall when we bid Heritage Park to begin with, you had bids, wide-ranging bids. I mean, the high bid was, I was two and a half times a little bit, and so this is not that surprising, and for all the factors that were already mentioned.
All right.
I will say, just as an added note, some of those vendors that did submit for this particular excavation project were invited to bid on the Woodcliff, and when I called them, they just said they're too busy. So, just food for thought. Well, I mean, we, there's only so many companies that are relatively local, and we all know the players, so, and a lot of them were the same people invited to Woodcliff and just said, we don't have time.
All right, I'll make a motion to authorize township supervisor and clerk to execute a contract with Eagle Golf for the Heritage Park Parking Lot Expansion, in a base bid about of $101,279, plus $35,000 for a contingency for the additional work. And approve that budget of that bid to the 401 Capital Project Fund to cover said costs.
I'll support that.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Kalani. Any other discussion, questions?
I had a question, there was a reference to HRC doing project management. Did we already approve that back in June, or is that on the table? You mentioned it on the table.
Well, let me rephrase that, there was a $14,000 fee that was approved, we've only paid for the design right now. Was going to go back and read the contract to see if we have the option, and quite frankly, I apologize, I've been out the last five days and I'm a little behind. But that would be my goal, is to see if we have the option to pull out on that. You know, quite frankly, that's, that is a decision of the board, if we want to have that done. I know the design we had to have for the soil erosion to turn into Livingston County, that was required, that wasn't optional, so.
If you could come back and let us.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine this evening is our second meeting in September. Board reports, start with trustee Petrucci.
I have no report tonight.
Clerk Shofu.
No report.
Treasurer Horning?
Well, yesterday was the last of tax collection day, we had over 500 people at our counter yesterday. If you divide that up by our employees, that was servicing somebody almost every minute for two people at the counter for our whole day, it was extremely busy. And we had over, almost 200 payments in the drop box out front, and 200 payments in the mail, so we took in like a thousand payments. It was, went really fast, last day. And I did notice some of the trustees' payments were in on that last day, so I thank you all.
Not letting the government have my money until it's ready.
Oh, you know how many times I heard that yesterday? Yeah, all went well.
Thank you. Trustee Kalani?
I have nothing.
Trustee Jermaine is absent. Trustee Harper?
No report.
I have no report this evening. Managers report?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, just a couple of updates, actually. Sent to the operational reports. We did, the area chambers did meet at the hall chamber yesterday with Congressman Mike Bishop and kind of talked about current issues, and they got a healthy dose of zip code concerns from us. But it's good to know, actually, that you may already know that Mr. Bishop's chief of staff is a Heartland resident, and so we have those connections, and always good to have that relationship to be able to pick up the phone. We have, I did also attend this morning the SEMCOG Economic Development Strategy Task Force, which is trying to align regional strategies, obviously centered around a healthy southeast Michigan. Detroit is a core city, obviously, a lot of economic development happening throughout the communities, including ours. And that was the first of three meetings, and some good participation there. And I did provide a link for that in the report, if you're interested in seeing more about that. You may have seen that we do have the water trucks in, and we will be communicating with residents that, you know, we'll have a couple of new staff members and the trucks around, so they know what that's about. And we'll have, should have a operator, the second staff position for you at the October 6 meeting, to take a look at.
I think those are the highlights that I saw. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Can you just, on behalf of the board, explain a little bit more about hiring the new staff, and what that's, what those people are dedicated for?
Yes, let's try to do the short version of that. We, the water system, we've been using a contract operator for a long time, we took a look at that, well, we've been looking at it, actually, since I've been here. And after a lengthy process, took a look at the feasibility of doing that with staff instead of a contract relationship, we identified that we have every reason to believe that we can do that more efficiently, better quality, and at a better, at a cost savings. And so we've made that transition, and that'll start on October 1st. And we actually, it's worked out so that the foreman that we're hiring is actually from the contract company, so the institutional memory and knowledge is all there, and we have some really good candidates for operator. And so I, we're very confident, and we're in good shape, that we're going to meet or beat the feasibility study of the cost savings and the efficiencies we hope to have, and just, you're going to see the impact of that, not just in the water system, but with what we're able to do in parks and other areas, just the fine touches that make a community better, so.
So again, the real purpose of hiring these two individuals was for the water system?
That's correct.
And the trucks were purchased through the water system?
That's correct.
Because that's the entity that was, I just want to make sure everybody kind of understands where we're headed with the, there was a cost savings to the water system with the benefit for the township as a whole.
Correct, yeah.
And then, of course, and I was part of that discussion with James and Bob and Matt Jermaine and I, at the time, I think Larry Hopkins as well was also involved in the discussion. And the idea of being, of course, that after looking at several issues, including some of our thoughts regarding possibly utilizing, in lieu of contracting, perhaps there were some other savings that could be done with some of the other water, water entities in the, in the area, that didn't seem feasible. And then Oakland County just, at this time, is not in a position to take, you know, they currently operate the Highland Township Water Supply System. So this looks like a win-win from the standpoint that there are going to be other services that, that those employees can perform that we would otherwise also be contracting out for. And there's time savings, obviously, when you have someone on staff, but we're all mindful of increasing.